Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of Thursday, March the 2nd. I will note that all of our council are present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review our agenda for our Monday, March 6th meeting. So, council, if you could please look at that agenda. Let us know if you have any questions. If you don't mind, I'll kick it off. I met yesterday with city staff about Agenda Item 5A, which is the home dollars for transitional housing that were -- goes back to the American Rescue Plan money that we're still receiving and figuring out what the highest and best use is. I think it would benefit all of us to hear a little bit more about that. So, I don't -- do you mind? Yeah. Michelle, thank you. This looks like an opportunity to ask, to receive some federal funding and apply it and then figure out the best way to apply it to address the homelessness situation. Maybe transitional housing, right?
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Home ARP allocation plan. This is money that comes from the American Rescue Act from 2021. HUD recently responded to all of the cities and put a deadline on having this allocation plan in by March 31st. Basically, what this plan entails is it identifies all of the gaps and needs in the community and identifies the categories that we would like to place our dollars in. So, these funds, we're receiving 5.6 million from HUD. They are specific to one-time funding. I just want to be -- that they're very distinct from the regular home dollars that we get annually. Those are primarily for just affordable housing. These funds can also be used for services and for non-congregate transitional housing. There are four particular populations that we're able to serve with these dollars, and those include persons who are experiencing homelessness or at risk, those who are victims of domestic violence or sexual assault, and those folks that are in need of services to prevent from being homeless. The activities that are eligible include non-congregate shelter. And when we talk about non-congregate is having individual space for sleeping as opposed to like a dormitory-style living. And we also can do services, which would include wraparound services, social services, to help those folks come out of homelessness. And you can also use these funds for affordable housing, so development of or preservation of existing housing. So, in order to complete this plan, HUD required that we did some extensive outreach in the community, and we did have stakeholder interviews, which included those nonprofits that serve this population, as well as the continuum of care. We did a survey that was online for three weeks, and we had substantial response, over 300 responses on that survey, and it had questions pertaining to the vulnerable populations as well as housing and homelessness. We had four community meetings. They were all hosted online, and we had great feedback from those meetings. The feedback that we had received from all of the public outreach included the need for permanent affordable housing as well as non-congregate transitional shelter, because there are shelters out there and different programs that can help on an emergency basis, but we seem to have that gap for that next step to get folks into longer-term housing. So, with the dollars, we propose to use the Home ARP specifically for non-congregate shelter. That can include non-traditional-type housing. It could be housing that's already prefabricated. It could be small communities, or it could be a hotel. So, there's different varieties that we could use the funding on. We'd also like to leverage our existing dollars, so our annual home dollars that I mentioned earlier, for affordable housing, so we can use development with those funds and then also continue to use our CDPG public services for the actual service to fill that gap. And so, for the next steps, this will be coming to the City Council on the 6th for approval of the allocation plan. It will then be submitted to HUD by the 31st of March. That is, per se, our application for funding. So, once it's approved, that's when we'll start having conversations with the internal departments, City Council, other stakeholders, to determine exactly how we want to utilize these funds for non-congregate shelter. We do have until 2030 to utilize these funds, so we have time for planning. And with that, any questions?
Mayor, can I just -- thank you, Michelle, for the presentation. So, I think council can see the presentation we did on the homeless pathway -- pathway to --
Recovery.
Pathway to homeless. Pathway to recovery. We talked a lot about that, this gap, right, in the transitional housing. And so, now we have this 5.6 million. 5.6 million is a lot of money, but it's not enough. And so, I think as we look at this, we are also trying to figure out and only separate. So, this is this Home ARPA, okay? So, this is a different pot of dollars than the general ARPA we've been talking about, the 105 million, okay? Because inside that 105 million, we've also allocated dollars for transitional housing, for emergency housing. So, I think what Michelle's always pointing out is we're trying to figure out a way to leverage all those buckets, right, to address this need, whether it's the regular ARPA, Home ARPA, and then, as she mentioned, recognizing, anytime we set up a look at transitional housing or even emergency housing, just having the housing by itself isn't the solution. We need to have the supportive services that wrap around it to help the individuals that we bring to those locations to help them find, connect with, whether it's addictive services, behavioral health, food services, any variety of things. So, I think part of this effort is also trying to make sure we look at all those buckets and all those funding opportunities to come up with a solution.
Yes, Ms. Spilber.
Hi, thank you. So, did you say specifically how these activities or projects will come to? Like, is there a possibility that we would use any of the ones that aren't getting grant funding through the other dollars or anything like that, or this will all be brand-new?
Thank you, Councilmember Spilber. Very good question. So, I don't recall that any of the activities right now that are not receiving funding or are receiving funding fit the transitional housing. So, it would go through a separate process. Once we kind of determine what we're looking for, we'd put an RFP out, and of course, those would go through a competitive process and come back to the City Council for approval.
And so, if this is all happening pretty quick, right, in the next few weeks?
As far as turning the plan in?
Well, is the plan specific to what we're doing? No? Okay.
So, Michelle, go back, because I think it's just, this is a HUD process. So, we have to go through the due diligence that she's gone through with the surveying, the meeting with the stakeholders, getting that feedback, and kind of identifying the broad category. Then there'll be another process.
Okay, so we don't have to decide which project?
No.
Okay. And so, but, so that answers my question, that anyone who's not getting funded, I can think of one maybe that would fit, but they would have to reapply for these dollars?
That is correct.
But we would let them know that they could for this or whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so, that was a very good point, Chris. This does not, this plan does not allocate funds to any specific project or any agency. It just says, "We want to use our dollars in this pot of money."
Okay.
In this pot.
For transitional housing.
We're just letting HUD know this is our, we've gone through an effort to come up with a community input, and here's the plan we're moving forward.
And so, then, is there a timeline on the rest of it?
So, as she mentioned, once we submit this, then we have till 2030.
2030 until the month.
Right. So, but, I mean, that's a long time away. But, so, I mean, are we trying to figure out a project this year?
I would say this, I would submit this, is that I would like to see the opportunity to do something significant, right?
Okay.
And so, because I think 5.6, again, is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money for something like this.
Yeah.
So, we have, so maybe there's the opportunity, as we look at the, I don't know what else to call it, the general ARPA, the other allocation, and these dollars, I don't know if there's a way, Michelle, we could look at, you know, when we talk about a transitional housing project or an opportunity, is maybe exploring the opportunity to, we may need to combine these resources. Would that be possible, Michelle?
Have to have a more of an impact.
So, we could, yeah. So, we could say, okay, here is a project, right? If it's, there's a lot of conversations about transitional housing. There's been ideas about, you know, finding an area of land and then coming in with many
Like the box houses.
Or something like that. A variety of different concepts, right? And so, but that's still, takes some time, plan it, find the location, the infrastructure, who's going to develop it, but then bringing all the services. And I think what we're saying is, if we come up with that transitional housing idea, then we also need to look at all these other, in the future, maybe allocations of CDPG as then providing, or having agencies that can provide the services that are complement that. We can't just go buy, get a plot of land, set up these many, whatever, homes, and then just think that it's just going to work on its own. So, there's a lot of work.
And that was, my next question was, this obviously would be in partnership then with another nonprofit.
Oh, yes.
Like, it's not something, it's not a project the city is going to do and take on. It would be, yeah, partnering with someone already in this space. Okay.
Great. Are there questions on this topic?
I thought this was really exciting, because this is 5.6 million dollars of the new money that we hadn't been planning on. I mean, I know we're pursuing the motel and some other innovative ideas. There's, the nonprofits right now are full of ideas, including many homes and inflatable homes, and I mean, all kinds of innovative things. And I think this opens it up to the idea that we can entertain those notions and leverage, as Chris said, 5.6 million is, isn't right number. But if we can offer this up and a partner comes in and says, "Well, I'll take that and multiply it," this could have a really significant legacy impact from our COVID dollars, so.
And just to clarify again, all we're doing, all, we are submitting our plan to HUD. We're not allocating, we're not making a decision, but we are suggesting it needs to be focused on this transitional housing, which, again, is consistent with the previous conversation we had before.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good report. So, that's on the consent agenda for Monday. Council, other things on Monday's agenda you'd like to talk about? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. 4A, I see we have a CMR for, oh, we just pop up, the engineered water. Thank you. So, yeah, we have the CMR for the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline and maybe an overview on the pipe purchases, why we're doing that so early. And then, we're also, well, we've got a presentation. I'll be quiet.
You want to, you can give it, I'm sure.
I'm sure. I know it's going to go mainly through Districts 1 and 2, and we're both sitting here.
How is this not going through some?
We tried.
All right. Well, thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council. We do have a short presentation to cover all the details. Before we get into the nuts and bolts of the actual project, I want to just take a quick step back, talk about the what and the why. First of all, what are we talking about? We're talking about recycled water. So, this is the water we treat at our water reclamation plants, and it falls under the umbrella of a 99-year agreement we have with the Gila River Indian Community whereby we deliver them recycled water for irrigation of farmland on tribal lands. And then, in exchange, they give us some reduced, minor-reduced exchange of high-priority Colorado River rates. Taking another step further back, we did this agreement almost 20 years ago, and for about the last 15 years, two of our three plants have already been tied into the community and delivering recycled water. So, we're already exchanging, giving them about 10,000 acre-feet of water a year, recycled water. So, right now, in our portfolio, we get back from them per the exchange agreement about 8,000 acre-feet. What this project will do is tie in that third plant, so the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant that sits up nestled between the 202 and Sloan Park. That third plant will be hydraulically connected to the other two plants, and then now it'll be a complete system that pretty much doubles what we're delivering to the Gila River community right now. It'll take it from about 10,000 acre-feet to 20,000 acre-foot. Now, that's important, because our agreement is to deliver ultimately almost 30,000 acre-foot of recycled water. So, we're only really hitting about one-third of our obligation, and per the agreement, there's a 23-year ramp-up, which will hit that mark in several years from now. So, delivering only one-third of that obligation, this project will get us more like two-thirds of the way. And then, as the system grows and we generate more wastewater, then that adds more water, and that'll get us close to the 20, it's actually 29,400 acre-foot. So, that's the what and the why, and I'll turn it over to Beth to talk more about the project.
Can I just, real quickly, Chris, this is a really good point, because I know we all go to these conferences, we hear about water, we hear about, you know, the Purple Water Pipe and how communities are using that, and, you know, why isn't Mesa doing that? So, when you hear that from your constituents, the answer is, we are. We're all in, and we are taking that water that we can reclaim and actually exchanging it for cheaper, more certain actual additional water to the city of Mesa. So, instead of taking the Purple Pipe water, putting it on golf courses or parks, I guess, we're actually taking the reclaimed water and delivering it for agricultural purposes to the Indian community, Hila's, and in exchange, we are getting a more, a cheaper, more certain, higher priority, I guess, better word, cheaper, higher priority source of water in exchange. So, we're all in, but we, you know, a lot of the communities, you'll hear that conversation about their systems, and they're using it for kind of non-potable purposes, I guess, is how they would typically be using it. So, I just want to, I think we get that question sometimes, and I think we're all in on recycling water, so.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We have our first of a number of actions coming before you here in the next few months, actually. The first action on council today is the pre-purchase or procurement of the large diameter 36-inch pipe that we need to install. So, if you look at the map, Chris mentioned the treatment plants, the Northwest Reclamation Plant up by Riverview, the Southeast Water Reclamation Plant that's down on the border between us and Gilbert, and then the Greenfield Plant, which is further down into Gilbert at the, towards the bottom at the top of the blue line, that we share with our partners in Gilbert and Queen Creek. Today, we have in the ground about 31 miles of the pipe that will take this water south to the Hila's. We have a section on the north that currently takes the water up to the Granite Reef Underground Storage Project. We're going to tap into that pipe and bring it south through Mesa and the Green Dash Line, and actually through part of Gilbert. We've been working with the town of Gilbert to get through their streets as well, and then connect at the Southeast Water Reclamation Plant. A project like this, the Green Line, I think most people are familiar with and have seen before and understand that we'll be buying the pipe and installing it through Councilmember Freeman's and Councilmember Spilber's districts. But there's also more to this project than that. The existing pipelines have been in the ground for quite some time. We need to get and inspect those. So, we'll have contracts coming before you to inspect those lines. So, kind of the pink, red, and blue lines, much of that work will be actually in Gilbert and Chandler when we go to do that work. And then, we never go into an arterial without looking to see what else we need to do while we're there, so we aren't cutting pavement two years later. So, when you look at the pipeline portion of the project that we're installing, the 36-inch line, we've also got three miles of 16-inch water line that need to be replaced along the alignment. And then, closer to the freeway at the 60, you'll see we've got two miles of road reconstruction to do on Greenfield. So, there are a whole series of contracts that will be soon coming to you. And the way that looks is, this is the approval for the procurement of the large diameter pipe. We will be back in April. We have to put in pumping facilities at each of the reclamation plants, and then we've acquired a property at Thomas and Val Vista from ADOT as a remnant of the freeway, and we will be putting a pump station there to do an intermediate boost of the water down to the south. So, you will see in April us coming back to pre-acquire equipment for the pump stations and the reclamation plants. We are running into a lot of long lead issues, particularly with electrical equipment and pumps, so we want to get those on order. And then, in May, we'll be back with the construction of the main pipeline. We hope to be putting shovels in the ground at the first part of the summer as we go through and get the 36-inch line in place. In August, we will be back with another contract for the pump stations and the reclamation plant. And in November, we will be looking at getting a contract in front of you to do the inspection and rehab, any rehab we need to do of the existing 31 miles of pipe. This all has to come together in the fall of 2025 so that we can start delivering water to the GRIC in the fall of 2025.
Beth, can you talk to us a little bit? Because I know there's been, some communities have had some challenges with the pipes going under the freeway. How we're addressing that, please?
So, on these projects, and some of you, I know, maybe Councilmember Freeman may remember, a few years back, we did a major pipeline across the north part of the city. There was a 78-inch water line for Val Vista where we took some potable water out of Val Vista and sent it to some of our other pressure zones. It will be done very similarly to that project. We are planning to tunnel, and these will be major excavations on each side of an intersection. Every major arterial along the alignment, we're looking at tunneling under those, so we don't open-cut those and restrict traffic on the intersections. As well as the freeway, we will be tunneling under those, and those will be major excavations. Those will be 20, 25 feet deep. We did that before. If you were around when we, up by the high school up there, you may remember back, it's been quite a few years now, but we did something very similar to that, so we don't tear up the intersections or the freeway.
Different question. So, I'll just continue on. This is really awesome, to be able to get this pipeline connected today, because we do know that there may be future CAP cuts in water, and we'll have that conversation the next time around. But, you know, having the ability to have this contract again with the GRIC to receive 0.8 acre-feet of water from them in lieu of our one acre-feet delivered to them, is that right, Chris? 0.8 to 1?
For every acre-foot we deliver them, we get 0.8 of color-water river supplies.
Yeah. For each one acre-feet you deliver?
We get 0.8.
You get 0.8, correct. And so, that'll help offset any of our future cuts, I believe. And the timelines are extremely important, because we don't know if those cuts will happen this year or next year, but hopefully with the wet winter we have, it may push it back a year that'll allow us to get these construction projects fully operational. So, I'll end with that. Thanks.
So, I think there's another point to be made. We get 0.8 per foot, but the price that we get that at, the CAP rate, it's what we get, we inherit the tribe's rate, which is a fraction of what the normal rate is, right?
Correct. That's correct. It's around $60 an acre-foot. We pay close to $300 an acre-foot for municipal rates.
So, all of this money gets recouped pretty quickly.
Yeah, we've done the analysis a few times. I haven't sent the updated numbers on the project, but our payback, as far as the cost because of the cheaper water and the certainty, well, it was well within 10 years. I think at some point, it was around six or seven years. So, it's still a very good deal for us. And there's very few capital projects like this where we can spend almost $100 million and get a payback that quickly, so.
Ms. Spilber?
I'll just comment. Beth met with me, and I was happy to hear that there's going to be just really great work done in communicating with our community of what's happening, because that was my concern as this literally runs smack dab through the middle of my entire district. So, I'm going to hear about it a lot, but, so I was really grateful that they're thinking way ahead of all of this and how to make this run as smoothly as possible for all of our constituents. So, thank you, because it is important, so we got to get that communication out.
And it is a major construction project. It will disrupt people's lives a bit. So, we'll be out running a series of public meetings. We like to bring sections of pipe out. We like to bring the big excavators out, so they can see why we need the street with, we need to build the project, and be working with them throughout. We've got my PR staff as well as a firm online to help us, because it's a very big project that covers a lot of distance. So, we'll have a lot of information out there. We'll have a project website we're getting ready to launch, and we'll be talking about how we're going to get through some of these areas.
Maybe a follow-up question on the cost of this. I heard, you know, before, it was like $185 million just back in the day. It was 85, then 185. Where were we kind of gone in the middle?
When we started the concept study of this project, we were under $100 million, but it was really just getting from point A to point B. We've since added some things that are really important, things that need to be done in the next five years, like inspect the 31 miles of pipe, and not just inspect it, but we're going to put in access ports at places, so in the future, we don't have to do big road closures and significant work. We can just get into these access points and inspect the pipe. That's going to be really important. And there's three or so miles of 16-inch water line that's at the end of its useful life that runs right through that corridor. We're going to take this advantage, the advantage while we have those road closures to get in and replace that. So, we've added components into it. It probably, the last cost we have is around $180 million. It includes all of that, and it's the total project cost. But as Beth lined up there on the slide, there's a lot of GMPs and components that are in pieces that we have to negotiate and work through. So, order of magnitude, we are up around that $180 million, but we have to go through a series of contracts to get there.
And how are we going to pay for it? What's our?
It goes into the utilities, so it'll be part of the utility bonds, yeah.
Through the utility, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. This will, with us, will be very disruptive, and we're all going to have to respond to constituent complaints, but when you tell the story, it's really a great story. And for 99 years, you know, this is how a big part of Mesa's water is going to be supplied. So, it's looking forward to explaining people, thanking them for their patience as they get through this. Mr. Summers?
I have a new item. May I proceed?
Yes, please.
Or does anybody else have anything on this item?
Thank you.
Speaking of disruptions, I don't know, Beth, maybe this is a question for you possibly, but Item 5B is more road construction in District 6, Elliott Road from Sausman Doors. Oh, great. So, is this project, has this project already been planned out? Because I didn't see a map of what this looks like, or are we entering the planning phase here?
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, RJ Zeta with the Transportation Department, with me is Eric Gudarian, our Deputy Director for Traffic Engineering. This is a funding agreement with Maricopa Association of Government, so it's literally just sending up the reimbursement mechanism for proposition $100 to come back to the city. Separately, we are working with the Engineering Department on design. I'll let Eric talk a little bit, because some of the work the city will end up doing, some work is coming in as new development is occurring in that corridor. So, Eric, can you kind of just give us an update on where we're at?
Sure. Good morning. So, I think the project has been planned for many years, and it was part of the 2020 Mesa Moves Transportation Bond, and has been planned out to widen Elliott Road to six lanes. We did a study for the previous Elliott Road project, the Elliott Road Tech Corridor project, where we looked at the number of lanes that we needed for Elliott all the way through Southeast Mesa and ended up determining six lanes. So, where we are right now is we're at the beginning of the design process, where we're going to be designing the roadway and working with engineering and the utilities out there to plan out the roadway. I will note that this has federal money with it, so we have to follow the federal process and do an environmental study with it, and then look to probably go to construction two to three years from now.
Two to three years, oh. That was my next question, is when the construction is going to happen, because there's a considerable amount of roadwork being done, and I assume slowed up because of the substantial rains we've had over the last few months, particularly along Elliott Road. Ellsworth is closed, Signal Butte is under construction.
Some of that is the private. So, everything around, Ellsworth and Elliott is all, is all due to private development out there, and sections of this road are, so our, this project is going from Ellsworth West to Sausman for the roadway work. We fully expect, we've seen some private development come in in the past year, that we fully expect that they'll be building their half-street while we're designing the rest of it.
And how do we come to the determination that we want to do a six-lane road rather than two-lane roads with other elements? For example, we have a, I mean, six lanes on Elliott on our side and the other side of the 202, but in Gilbert, it's, I believe, two lanes with turn lanes and even four in some cases?
So, Gilbert, the Elliott Road cross-section will be a four-lane arterial, just came from Gilbert, and that's what the plan was.
So, they're going to be changing it, too?
Yes. They'll be widening it out. I think we did a fairly extensive study, like I mentioned before, we did the Elliott Road Tech Corridor project, to look at future volumes along that corridor with build-out of everything, and we determined it to be six lanes. It'll also eventually continue on to be a six-lane arterial into Pinal County.
Okay. And it will have bike lanes associated with it?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I guess just as a policy statement, my concern So I guess just as a policy statement, my concern is that we're putting bike lanes, and we want to be multimodal in this community, but they're sharing lanes with trucks, and this is gonna be largely an industrial manufacturing zone based on its location. And so the potential for having trucks flying right next to bikes, if we continue to build Stroats here, large sections of very wide roadways that aren't really conducive to safe riding or safe other uses. And there are many highways in the middle of the city. And just as far as moving forward, as we start to look at these projects, I'd be really interested in other designs that maybe slow traffic down, provide safe pedestrian and alternative modes of transport uses in these areas, particularly as they're as they're close to residential areas. That's just a statement, so there's nothing to respond to as much. The other question I was gonna have is item 4C this week was a gas line going in, but since this road won't be under construction until for two years, then I think the gas line will clearly be in. And then hopefully as we do this project in two years, the others will clean up, and we should also look at water, communications infrastructure, and anything else that we need. So like Beth said, try to get all those projects in the ground at the same time so we're not constantly tearing up the roads, and I know you've been working on that.
Councilmember, we work very closely with Beth and her team. Beth and her team, we're trying to reach out to the non-city utilities as well so that as best we can, we can coordinate work so that we're not going back in and tearing up new streets within a few years of their construction.
Yeah, fantastic. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'd like to just echo on to what's got said about really understanding the evaluation of a six-lane roadway with bike lanes. As you said, when it's a 45 mile an hour, which I assume, people are going way faster than that, how you put a, how that's really a safe and comfortable place to use a bike. So I think maybe being a little bit more intentional on this is a roadway for cars, this is a street for people and bikes. I'd like to see us move into that a little bit if we could.
Mayor, Councilmember Goforth, we're certainly interested in that. Eric and his planning team, you know, are always looking for opportunities. A challenge that we have in this area is these projects start many years before construction actually happens from a planning standpoint. So as Eric mentioned, we've got new development, you know, and they're building their, what we call half-street improvement based on, you know, the concept for the roadway. So it is a challenge because our project only have pieces of the road, and so, you know, where if we were to try to do something different in terms of what we call the cross-section of the roadway, it might not match up with some of the other work that has already happened, if that makes sense, so.
But let's be, I just wanna be careful because I think we have discussed about how we are going to bring pedestrians and bicyclists around this area. It's not going through the main corridors, but we spent a lot of time developing, and we just installed the pathways along the 202 and connecting along, because that's where we really have a, we can provide a protected pathway, and so clear up to baseline, we from baseline all the way down to
Ultimately, the
Power, and then connecting with Gilbert Road on that pathway. Because part of this is like
So then maybe you don't put bike lanes on.
That's the point, yeah. I think there's, that's the dilemma, right? Because you're right. If you're riding on a bike and you've got a semi-truck coming by, maybe at 45 miles per hour. And so what I think what we're kind of endorsing for those who want to have that experience, whether it's pedestrians or bicyclists, is we've spent a lot of money and got from the region, and I want to say baseline is that part, I can't remember if we go north of there right now, but baseline
No, it goes from baseline all the way down to Halls today.
On to Halls, and then eventually we want to go all the way and then connect where Gilbert picks up south of the 202 at Power, and then we'll connect all the way to the system. So there's sometimes this idea that it's better to find a way to have these, all these connected systems than to try to, you know, force it into a corridor. But then remember, sometimes we are, when we're getting certain types of funding, we're required to create certain cross-sections, right? Does that apply here?
Well, I think we just, we match our cross-sections, and I think it's important there are different types of riders, and there are some riders that like to be out on the road. It's a smaller fraction of the population, but they like the on-lane or on-street bike lanes. And then I think as part of our transportation master plan, and we'll be coming back and talking more about this, I think we're trying to identify other corridors within the city that are important for that multimodal aspect, that maybe we don't need as many lanes, and we'll, you know, we'll revisit that as we start to redevelop, you know, some of our roadways as we reconstruct it.
But the pathways I'm talking about, they're completely separated, and they're just dedicated solely to pets and bikes. And I think in southeast Mesa, that's kind of been our vision is using, I don't know, this big looping opportunity.
In southeast Mesa, we have the, we're using the 202 right-of-way, and then we, further out, we were looking at using the power lines that cut east-west across southeast Mesa. They're between Elliott and Guadalupe.
Yeah, there's considerable multimodal use on the roads out in my district, and as far as the arterial streets, there's a peloton an hour, I think, coming through during the weekends, and they largely use Elliott and Guadalupe. I think they've somewhat abandoned baseline, probably due to traffic. But if, I mean, they pay for it, too, right? And how do we design roads? And I agree, we're looking at it, certainly, but that, that kind of user isn't gonna use the canal path.
And we agree, and as Eric said, what we're trying to do is design a system that can accommodate different types of users, you know? Because there are those, I'd call more hardcore folks that are, you know, they want to be on the bike lane, you know, on the arterial, and they go, but then we look for those connection points to safer or more protected routes. You know, this is something we can certainly, when we give our update in a couple of weeks on the transportation master plan progress, we can certainly touch on that this is a component of that plan.
Yeah, and there's gonna be another opportunity for everybody to be involved with the general plan and
And our plan feeds into the general plan, which we're working, you know, there's a big internal group, you know, that's making sure that what we call the subordinate plans are feeding into the general plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was the point I wanted to make, is that we need to continue this conversation and the time and place as we update our transportation master plan.
Right, which you're gonna get a briefing on in two weeks?
I believe it is the 16th or 17th, whatever summer session is on a Thursday.
We're coming forward with that, great.
Yeah, very timely.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Freeman, I think you had another question on Monday's agenda.
You know, I just wanted to mention on our safety and our users, you know, recently in the West Valley, there was a serious accident where cyclists were, you know, killed and a number of them injured, and that was very unfortunate, and it was an accident, but whatever happened, we need to provide as much safety for all of our, whether it's multi-use paths, our users, our arterials, and be as safe as possible, and that includes the driver of the vehicles. So that come, you know, that came to my forefront. But I have a question on 4D about fire trucks. We're getting five new, emergency one fire truck, I can't pass up fire to come up and talk about
I do, too. Are they red?
They're not, Scott.
What the heck?
But maybe help me
Make better, chief.
White is bright. We're going to E1, and for decades we did Pierce, and maybe I've lost this timeline from Pierce now to E1. And then a follow-up question is, are we still getting electric fire truck?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, thank you for having us up, and the questions, James Johnson, Assistant Chief with Mesa Fire, and I have our Maintenance Administrator Jason Nicholson here for any further questions. The first one, yes, we went with Pierce for a long time, and now in the world we're in, as all of us can appreciate the delay and the quality of things and builds, so we've started more of a competitive process, so, and things have come along, and the vehicles, and Jason can talk a little bit more to that, of why they're safer and things like that. So that's the reason we've kind of went out to everybody, and our committee's done a great job of getting the best price possible and the best vehicle, and that's why the switch.
And I didn't see on there the delivery timeline, so maybe you can elaborate to that, because, you know, these trucks cost $1 million apiece, and then time you put the equipment on, it raises it up to this level, and then put it in the fire station for service. So Jason, thanks.
Yes, sir, thank you, and thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Freeman. Yeah, we've typically went from an eight to 10-month build process on pumpers and 12 to 14-month on ladders to now almost 36 months for both of those. And so during this process, as the contract with Pierce was ending, we did some research and then visited multiple manufacturers to see how their, how their process for building trucks and their quality checks and stuff like that, and that's what brought us to the decision to go with E1.
So we have a timeline of three years for a truck? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir, which is changing our replacement schedule dramatically on how we're trying to navigate through that and get those.
And there will be more coming, probably because of this three-year issue. We're really having to relook at replacements, so looking at that close. And then the electric truck?
Yes, please.
Yes, it is a challenge. It is being built. We have some updated pictures and things. It's across seas right now, getting everything taken care of on electric stuff, and we're with them weekly, every Friday, I think.
Every Thursday.
Every Thursday, we have a meeting with them, and they update us, so it is moving along, and it's scheduled to be here
September.
September.
When?
You were all thinking it.
And it was supposed to be delivered
December.
December last year, so now it's September of this year?
Yes, sir, and it's currently
We should have a parade when this happens, right? Mr. Brady? Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir, and it is, and Comstock, getting what they call the skateboard, which is the electrification of that unit. We did see pictures of that, that process happening last Thursday, so it is getting close, and we're all excited.
And Los Angeles, who did get the Rosenbauer truck about six, eight months ago, they did have quite a delay as well.
Almost two years.
Almost two-year delay on theirs, so this new stuff is just technology and things are difficult. But we are getting even newer technology on this truck because it's delayed, so we're getting the latest and greatest upgrades with no cost, so.
Who's the manufacturer again?
E1.
E1?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
So is that a hard day, September?
That's
I'm not trying to be a smart aleck. It's just there's a lot of, I mean, even at a national level, when I, when we talk about this, people are saying, when this happens, let us know. We want to come, you know, to the ribbon-cutting.
Why don't we wait till we have a firm 456 to date out?
Absolutely.
How's that?
Okay.
That feels, September also feels very squishy.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Brady, and that would be great. We, again, we're getting the updates, and we'll make sure we communicate that, and when we know more specifics, we'll definitely bring that forward.
Great, thank you very much.
I might add, don't, when we pick up the regular diesel-powered trucks that are driven from the manufacturer to Mesa, are they shipped on trucks?
They are driven, sir.
They're driven. So this one here will not be driven to Mesa because I don't think there's enough power supply to get from Florida to here?
That's where, that's where
So it'll be put on a truck and shipped, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Deliver it. Okay.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions regarding Monday's agenda?
I just had a question going back to the transportation plan. Is that coming to SAT first? Are we gonna hear that, or does that, are we gonna hear it for the first time in council?
We could do that. We were just, again, we're trying to get it timed up with the general plan that's out there, because we're already out there talking to the community, so we could, we could try to work with SAT and get it scheduled also.
Mr. Summers.
Just a quick question on item 8, which is just 8A. Jim, this is a final plat for us. Is a plat approval a legislative act or is it an administrative act?
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, it's an administrative act.
Okay, so we've had some conversations, I've had a conversation with you and Mayor, Mr. Brady, about maybe finding ways to keep these as administrative acts and not bring them to council, but that's gonna take a rules change, so we can add this.
Correct. That would change, it would be a change to the code, and state legislature is also looking at changing some legislation to clarify state statute regarding that, and so we might wait until after that before we change our code, but we might also look at it regardless.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, last call for agenda items for Monday. All right, thank you. Moving on then, the next item on the agenda for this meeting, item 2A is a presentation and to provide direction on an overview of Mesa's water and wastewater systems, resources, and water shortage management plan. Welcome, gentlemen. Welcome back.
So I think we're gonna pick up on a little bit of what we were just talking about. So I'm Chris Asser, Water Resources Director, and with me here today is Brian Draper, Water Resources Advisor. So we're gonna give a high-level overview of some important things under the umbrella of our department right now. We're gonna start out talking about water supplies and our portfolio, and then we're also gonna talk a little bit about how we reuse reclaimed water and make beneficial reuse or use of that commodity. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about our water shortage plan, and then we're gonna wrap up talking a little bit about some things we're doing on the operational front. So first, just a couple of quick facts. These first few have to do more with our customers, so as you know, we have over 500,000 people in Mesa, 170-square-mile service area. In terms of our customers, we have about 158,000 metered customer connections. Now, most of those are residential, about 141,000 are residential. There's a little bit under 10,000 commercial metered customers, and there's a little bit under 5,000 commercial or metered customers that are multifamily. In terms of average use, that fluctuates between 100 to 200 gallons per household per day, but the figure I like to look at is what is the median, what's the median use of a household? And that's about 6,000 gallons a month, and that's a number we use frequently, and we talk about that when we talk about rates as well. It's an important figure. These next set of bullets really get to the system itself. We have over 2,500 miles of water distribution piping. We have three water treatment plants, and if we were to operate all three of those at full capacity, that would be about 186 million gallons a day. On the wastewater side, we have almost 1,800 miles of sewer line, and then we have close to 30 million gallons a day of capacity at our three reclamation plants, but I should point out, we have similar capacity that we share at the 91st Avenue Wastewater Treatment Facility that's in Towson, Arizona, where one of the partners who own that facility.
Ms. Duff.
Good morning, Brian. We're gonna be good friends this morning. Lots of questions. On the breakdown of residential and business use, do we, do you have an idea what percentage that represents? You know, how much of our use is in a residential, for a residential accounts versus commercial accounts? Is it, if you had to take a wild guess?
I think we crossed the 50/50 mark, where commercial was, commercial always lagged residential, and it was just within the last few years, I believe, we've hit parity where commercial and residential are similar in terms of overall demand.
In water use? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Summers.
You mentioned average use per household, 6,000 gallons a month?
That's the, well, that's the median.
Median.
The average is less.
The average is less, okay.
Some of the big users skew that.
Right, because we have difference between median and average. So how does that compare to other states? Do we know?
As far as an industry standard, Councilmember Summers, it's pretty, pretty average across the country that we would see that, especially with single-family residents.
And I ask that because swimming pools can skew that. I think we have a lot of pools in the state, but other states, Midwest, whatever, don't have a water crisis going on. So if we're average to the US, somehow we have to drive that to below average, I would think.
Councilmember Summers, I would say the one thing you have to consider about the desert in particular is that most of our water use is outdoors, so where a lot of us come from out east or the Midwest, you don't even have an irrigation system. Mother Nature waters your lawn or your trees or whatever you have on your property. Here, you have irrigation systems for turf and drip irrigation for your shrubs and trees, so 70% of the water used is outdoors.
Yeah, and I think I've seen stats that actually suggest that the Phoenix area per
Yeah, and I think I've seen stats that actually suggest that the Phoenix area per account is actually much less than the national average that, and it hasn't grown over years. And that's one of the things that you often hear water managers in the area talk about is how well we've been able to adjust and maintain that below-average usage for residential in the desert versus other communities.
We're gonna talk about this a lot, and, and I think that would be interesting to look at that number and what it is in other states compared to here to see if, if we need to target some more incentives towards reducing water usage.
Agreed. And there, there's a reason why even though we use a lot of water outdoors, we're more in line with the rest of the country, and that's because our system is so much tighter. And what I mean by that is we find leaks and we make sure that we really minimize that. The hometown that I grew up in, in the Midwest, loses thirty percent of their water just through leaks in their system, and we, we use, or we lose single digits, about five or six percent.
We continue to tighten that up, so that's, that's good.
Correct. I think the logical place to start, if we're gonna talk about portfolio, is our one-hundred year assured water supply. So I think you're all familiar with the term and, and what it is, but what it is specifically is it's a, it's a designation we get from the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and it's Mesa or any other city that has this. It's demonstrating a continuous physical and legal availability of water. And not only that, we have to demonstrate that we have the, the infrastructure, we have the means to make sure that we have sufficient water quality, and then that we also have the financial capability to, to hold those supplies, to treat and deliver that water, and then to maintain that water quality. So we have to demonstrate that for a one-hundred-year period. This is, this is renewed every fifteen years. The last time we, we received our designation was two thousand and ten, so we're in the process right now to have that updated for two thousand and twenty-five. Another thing I think that's interesting to point out on assured water supply is it's a regional type of interactive approach with ADWR, especially when we're talking about groundwater, because we share the water aquifer that sits below us. So you can't look at it in a silo and look at Mesa and then, but not look at Gilbert and Tempe and everyone who shares the aquifer. You have to make sure that aquifer is not over-allocated. So DWR has a comprehensive model that takes all that into consideration, so we have these meetings and interaction with DWR. They run their model and then they make sure that there's equitable use of that aquifer and it's not being overtapped. So I think that's important to point out with a hundred-year assured water supply.
Mr. Summers?
We still have some wells here, particularly in the county islands, I would assume, and maybe even some here. Are they limited in how much water they're allowed to remove from the ground or they can, can they pump unlimited amounts?
Do you want to address that? Anything that I can add?
Councilmember Summers, in the county areas, a lot of those are, they're considered exempt wells, and they're limited to thirty-five gallons per minute, and that's to supply a home only. There are some that have subdivided lots where you'll have one shared well. Those tend to be problematic over time because they're all trying to share water from that single well.
It's not the concerns we hear in other counties of significant pumping out of the groundwater, correct?
Correct. And, and Councilmember Summers, most of the county areas in Mesa that have these exempt wells are kinda at the foothills of the mountains, so we may in future hear, like Rio Verde, where those wells go dry and then they're looking for city services.
All right, then.
So we don't currently today provide a? Hook up, do we, or tanks, water carriers?
Chris, Councilmember Summers, we do have a water hauling station that is limited to existing customers. We, at this time, do not allow new customers to come on. These are farmlands in far east Mesa. We do expect over time that these will begin to fall off and they'll look to be annexed into the city of Mesa and provide city services.
Okay, we'll have to look at how we're gonna fund infrastructure in those county islands at some point, but for a later date.
Thank you.
Okay. So now let's get, we talked about a hundred-year assured water supply. Now let's talk about where our water comes from. So we can go to the first slide. So one thing I want to point out right up front is all water is not created equal, right? So there's different sources in our portfolio, and there's different, I guess, there's different ways we acquire that water, there's different ways we use it, there's, there's different places where we can use it. So I want to walk through some of those differences, and I want to start by talking about the Salt River Project. So you have a map on the screen, and there's three primary zones that we work with. When we're talking about Salt River Project, we're talking about the city zone, and this is water from the Salt River System and the Verde River System, and we treat that water, that surface water, at the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant. So that's the biggest water treatment plant in the state of Arizona. We co-own that with the city of Phoenix. They manage it. We, we own about ninety million gallons a day of capacity. So that's where the water's treated. One of the distinct things about SRP is, going back to the origins of the Salt River Project, water is attached to the lands. So there's specific designated lands, they're called on-project lands, where that water from that system is used on-project primarily. So water that starts out at Lake Roosevelt up in the SRP system and the Verde, it is primarily designated for the city zone, and that's from the Eastern Canal West. A lot of you don't know where the Eastern Canal is, but just think of Al Vista, that's, that's a good demarcation to think of. There's less than fifty square miles in the city zone as opposed to the hundred and seventy square miles of our service area that we talked about. There are exceptions to water that originates from the SRP system that can be used outside of the city zone or, or on-project. One notable exception is new conservation space water, NCS. You hear us talk about that? What that is, is when Roosevelt Dam was raised in the nineteen nineties, there was additional storage volume created behind the dam, and Mesa and many others wisely bought into that storage volume. And we own about forty-one thousand acre foot of space, and it's not a clear-cut amount. And what I mean by that is it, it changes as the, as that space, as the water level in Lake Roosevelt rises and falls and fills that space and empties. There's formulas that I won't get into, but DWR has these formulas where they, they make a determination of how much they want to say that we have in our hundred-year assured water supply. Right now, it's, it's almost like a checking account. So in a year that we don't use any NCS water, the checking account goes down a little bit because of evaporation. And then really wet years like this, you see the rain, the snow that we're having, then the checking account starts filling up, right? We start getting deposits in the checking account. So right now, we have about twenty thousand acre foot of NCS water, and that's important because we can use that anywhere in the city. So as we start talking about cuts or shortages due to drought on the Colorado River System, NCS is a really important backstop, water we can draw upon, and then we can bring that into the city and we can use that anywhere in the city, and that can help bridge some shortages. And, and like I mentioned, it's also part of our one-hundred-year assured water supply. On paper, it's twelve thousand five hundred acre foot per year. That's just administratively what's, what's in our assured water supply, but we can, if we need to use more than that in a year or less than that, we have variability. But that's, that's just one other aspect of SRP that's important. And that, that goes to the Bartlet Dam raising. We're at the table in those discussions. Right now, we're going through that process, and we're also very intent upon acquiring volume behind the Bartlet Dam. It would be used the same as what the NCS water, the same purposes, water that we could draw upon and we could use anywhere in the city.
And Chris, to that point, we, so the Bartlet's the Verde River.
Correct.
And so it's a separate, independent watershed, and that we're working with SRP and, is it BL, is it B, is it reclamation or?
It's reclamation.
And working with them to literally raise the Bartlet Dam to create more storage behind that dam, and then eventually work to have that water then delivered into the water system. Now, it's a longer-term vision, but we've already financially are participating in the studies and have made a very strong commit, or commitment to SRP that we very much want as, as I told them once, all the water you'll give us. And so we are very much involved in that project also for future water supply.
So Chris and Brian, on, on that topic, on the elevation changes on water for Roosevelt, the flood control space and the new conservation space, one of the difficulties in moving that water is we don't have an interconnect to really move that water from Roosevelt over to the other water treatment plants. So we're looking forward to that in the future, part of your discussion, correct?
So Councilmember Freeman, so what you're referring to, they're, they're called the SCIF, and they're in the design, they're looking at design alternatives, because the CAP Canal and the SRP River, they cross, they cross one another, and how they do that is it's water. The CAP dips underneath the, the Salt River through a siphon, through a big pipe that goes under, and then it shoots up, and then it becomes gravity again, but, so you can't get water from the Salt River up into the CAP Canal without pumps, and that's what this project is looking at doing. There's multiple partners, including Mesa, that are at the table in those discussions, but that would give us an easier way to take NCS water to east Mesa, to the eastern zone and the southern zone. We can still do that now. We just take it at the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, and then we have pumping stations there in central Mesa that push the water east, so we can still do it. It would be easier if we could just take it at our two plants on the CAP Canal, though.
Okay, thanks. Help me out with a concept here. SRP side water's tied to the land?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if we, if we buy into this dam with the extra water, that's SRP side water, is it still tied to the land, or can we transfer it over to the eastern and southern zones without having to repay it?
Yes, that's a good question, Councilmember Summers. It would be similar to the new conservation space water behind Roosevelt Dam. It could be applied anywhere in the city.
Anything, anything new addition from this point forward would be able to use across the city?
I can just tell you that there will be spills this, this spring because we cannot capture the water on the Verde watershed, and so there will be water flowing in the Salt River here, probably in about three months, that could be captured behind the dam. Not all of it, but most of it.
Is it McCallis-McDell that'll be probably shut down, right?
Probably Gilbert Road.
Gilbert Road, yeah.
The right.
That bridge is.
They're building a brand-new bridge there.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. When you, when you describe the CAP going under the SRP, does that happen in one spot or is it multiple locations?
No, it's just one location. It goes under through a pipe.
And where is that?
Mayor, Mayor, you were standing on top of it once when they dried it up.
It was, it was really very dramatic. We got to walk through it, and this was probably about two or three years ago when it was being rebuilt. So it's right at the Bush Highway and Ellsworth.
Yeah, yeah. So Grand Reef Dam.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that, that was my guess.
If you're a bicyclist, it's at the top of King Kong.
Bush and Power, right? I mean, or is it over at Ellsworth?
I see some questions coming up on the panel.
Okay, anyway.
We'll show you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Before we move on to the next slide, just to give you some numbers, so in terms of how our water is, is delivered to customers, last year in two thousand and twenty-two, we averaged eighty-seven million gallons a day. That's equivalent for the year of about ninety-eight thousand acre foot. So if we just round it briefly or slightly to a hundred thousand acre foot, thirty-seven percent of the water we delivered to our customers last year, or about thirty-seven thousand acre foot, went to the city zone, went to those on-project customers. So we're gonna show you the same map, but we're gonna talk about another element of our water supplies. So this is Colorado River-oriented water supplies. Now, one of the differences from SRP is it has nothing to do with the lands, we can use it anywhere. Another difference is it's not fixed so much as a certain amount of water per acre. So SRP, it's the same amount of water as we had fifty years ago that we have fifty years from now. CAP, think about that as a bucket that has different classifications of water in it that we're always adding to. So the NCS water, we would consider, it's not Colorado River, but it's, it's flexible, it's in that flexible bucket of water. The main components of Colorado River are what we call AMI, municipal and industrial, and we have about forty-three thousand acre foot. And then we have some tribal leases, and we have some other small components or classifications. So in total, for Colorado, bless you, in total, for Colorado River, that bucket is about sixty-one to sixty-two thousand acre foot. Again, it's different classifications, and it's always changing. So there's, there's not a day, a week, a month that goes by, we're not always developing strategies to increase the amount of water that we have in that bucket. And one example of that is what we talked about earlier today, which is our agreement with the Gila River Indian Community. So every time we build a, a new pipeline to direct more water to them, or we get growth in the city that generates more recycled water that we give to them, we're, we're constantly filling up that bucket further and further. And that's important because we always want to stay ahead of growth in the city. In terms of the numbers, so delivered last year, about fifty-five percent of all the water consumed in Mesa came out of that bucket of Colorado River water. Okay. Are there any, any questions on Colorado River water?
Well, and then just to mention, that's the one we all hear about in the news right now with Lake Mead and the, the levels and.
We're gonna talk about that more.
The concerns about the drought. So we'll get into that here in a second, but that's, you know, it's interesting because we talk about the Salt River, last three, four years, they're actually doing pretty well. A lot of the tensions on the Colorado River, and then we'll just, yeah, so we're, we're concerned all the way, but while on the other hand, we have sources of water that are performing very well, too.
Right, we're gonna talk about that more, and that's a great point, and it goes, it speaks to all water's not created equal. So we're in a different situation here with the Salt River, Salt and Verde. In Arizona, if you look at the latest U.S. drought map, almost the entire state of Arizona is not in drought right now. There's only, there's about ten percent that is abnormally dry, and there's another ten percent that's like that next level of, of minor drought, but you compare that to Nevada's mostly in drought, Utah is predominantly in drought, same with Colorado. So you got states that are all connected, all part of the Southwest, but one state is faring much better when it comes to precipitation and runoff. So it's just, it varies, it's always gonna change.
But I guess the, the problem is the CAP water comes through those states that are in extreme drought, so.
That's imported water. So you, so it's, it's hard for some people to understand because you're sitting here in Arizona and you're looking out and seeing snow on the mountains, and you, you have rain coming down every other day, and you think, how could, how could we be struggling for water? But because we here in the Phoenix area import a substantial amount of water, we're reliant on the precipitation and the snowpack and, and all the way from Wyoming to eastern Utah and western Colorado. One last point on the Colorado River water. So we have our two treatment plants, the Signal Butte in the southern zone and the Brown Road Treatment Plant in the eastern zone. Those are the two plants that sit right nestled close to the CAP Canal, and those are the plants that take that water and deliver to customers in those zones. We have our third component, which is groundwater. You can see groundwater going right to the figure, only about eight percent. We have thirty-five deep-water wells, only eight percent of the water we serve to customers came from groundwater, which is good because we have, in our assured water supply, DWR permits us to pump up to about twelve thousand acre feet per year, and eight percent of the hundred thousand or so we delivered, that's only, that's about two-thirds of what we really could pump. And that's important because we, we want to rely on the surface water sources, which is considered renewable versus aquifer, the aquifer water, which is, it's, it's harder to replenish. So we want to preserve that, and the nineteen eighty Groundwater Management Act speaks to that very thing. In fact, I would say there, there's two acts that has allowed the state of Arizona to prosper and be as successful as it is today. And one is the nineteen eighty Groundwater Management Act, and the other is the development of the CAP Canal. Without those two things, I don't think Arizona would be nearly as prosperous as it is today. In terms of where the groundwater comes from, we sit over the east Salt River Valley sub-basin. This is a massive aquifer. It starts up northern Scottsdale Paradise Valley, stretches all the way down through the Salt River Pima Indian Community, through Tempe, Gilbert, Mesa, all the way out, Apache Junction, and all the way into Pinal County. So this is a massive sub-basin. The groundwater levels due to the nineteen eighty Groundwater Management Act, which, by the way, what that does is it just limits how much groundwater can be pumped, so it provides limits on, on what we can take from the aquifer. I don't think everything else they had. There's another slide on groundwater we want to get to.
Mr. Brady has a question.
Sure.
Chris, on, over the years, maybe a two-part question, how have the percentages from SRP, CAP, and groundwater have changed, and do we anticipate it changing as we add this infrastructure where we get furthermore on-surface water and reducing that groundwater wells extraction there? So. So...
That's a great question, Councilmember Reddick. So, not long ago, the city zone accounted for most of the water consumed in Mesa, because that's where most of the development was. And it's mostly built out, right? The Eastern Zone, especially the Southern Zone, it's really been in recent years where that growth has really ramped up. So, it hasn't been that long ago where the city zone accounted for more of the water used in terms of percentage. It's been in the last several years that the eastern part of Mesa has, that demand has exceeded what's in the city zone. We've always kept the groundwater pumping low, and that's always our strategy. So, the way we address the growth is we just try to build the amount of water we have in that bucket that I described, the Colorado River bucket. We try to add more to that bucket. In total, we have 61,000 to 62,000 acre foot. The organic demand in the eastern and southern zones is less than that. It's about 55,000 acre foot. So, we have a buffer. We have more surface water supplies than we need to meet demands. Now, the problem is going to be how much we start getting cut on the Colorado River. What is the future there? And that's where we would use more, a little more groundwater pumping. We probably pump less in the city zone, because the amount, that 12,000 acre foot I described in the Assured Water Supply, that's everywhere in the city. That's no specific zone. So, we pump less maybe in the city zone and pump more where we need it in East Mesa. That's if the cuts get more severe. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
So, that prompts a question. My bottom-line questionnaire is build out what's our water demand and build out what's our water supply, including, you know, GRIK allocations. And if that's a, if that's a moving target, you know, because of the droughts, if we're going to be having reduced allocations from CAP to respond to the droughts, then I, then there's uncertainty there as to whether or not, what we're trying to avoid is supply not meeting demand, right? So, can you answer the question? Can you answer the question, do we have a long-term problem? Is supply going to keep up with demand at build-out here in the next, what is it, 20, 30 years for our community?
Mayor, that's a great question. So, the way I would answer that is if you went back 25 years and looked in that bucket of Colorado River water and said, do we have enough for 2023? The answer would be, no, we're a little short. So, because we're always building and adding to that. So, we're always, we're always trying to get to a point where surface water alone is enough to meet demand. So, standing here, looking out 25 years, what we have in that bucket right now is shy of what the demand's going to be. We can make it up, even today, we can make it up with groundwater and long-term storage credits, but we don't want to do that. We want to keep building that Colorado River bucket. So, the goal is that, once we do get to build out, that that bucket has enough, has adequate surface water supplies that would require very little of any groundwater augmentation. So, that's the best way I think I can answer it. We're always building to get there.
So, that's the goal, I agree, but can't we realistically...
The point is, we've always been able to meet the goal. That's why, Chris, saying, if you go, if we took your scenario and just go back in time, would you say 20 years ago?
Go back 25 or 20 years.
20 years. If we had been 25 years ago in 1990, 19 whatever, 95, looking forward to today, we would have said we were a little short. But since that, we've always continued to find ways to supplement it, because just water sources are dynamic. Brian's out there looking for opportunities to purchase it from different utilities, different wells, or rights, water rights from other sources. So, but it doesn't mean we're, we don't have a huge gap from where we think we are. And a lot of it has to do with the patterns of development, right? And what that development is going to be, the density of development of what we anticipate that might be in the future. But right now, things that I don't know if you've accounted for, we haven't counted for the Verde River water coming out of Bartlett yet.
Correct.
But that will, that's another source that will be, we believe will be available, but we haven't built it into the scenario yet. And yet, that could be another significant source.
We also have the White Mountain Apache Tribe Lease, and that's already funded in our CIP. But, you know, we don't have that in the portfolio yet, but in the next few years, that will be. So, we're always incrementally adding to our portfolio.
I think we have a plan to meet that gap, is the way we say it. We can't tell you to, we couldn't, we don't account for those things that we are planning for, that we're already in place to get in 10, seven or 10 years from now. But we're already working on putting a Central Mesa pipeline in. We're already in the conversations with the Verde River, the Bartlett Lake conversation, even though that may be 10 years from now. We don't have it in the portfolio, but we are spending time and resources to acquire that in the future.
I think this is the question that we're going to be asked continually, because of the sensitivity to water. And I think we need to have an elevator speech prepared to answer that says, yes, that we, if there is a gap...
We have a plan. We have to get there. That's...
Yeah, and maybe that means that we look at, focus, we need to, what's the water supply for residential development? What's the water supply for industrial development? And if one, you know, is out of whack, then we need to say, okay, going forward, we're going to do less of this and more of that. Or, you know, we need to have it, need to have an answer for this. And it sounds like we do, but I just need, I think all of us need to be able to articulate this quickly, that we are, there are plans in place for supply and demand to...
And I think that's the answer. There is a plan. We have plans to acquire the water that we will need, but we do not include it in the portfolio today. But we are pretty certain about the Central Mesa Pipeline. We're very optimistic about the Verde River-Bartlett Lake opportunity, but we don't include it. And frankly, the economics of water, as it gets more expensive, is having that effect of pushing down the conservation. And we've already seen that in some of the major commercial users' data centers, that ones came to us and said they were going to use millions of gallons of water. But I think when they ran, you know, now we're seeing significant changes in that. That's fair, Brian, Chris, that they are, they are changing their ways and looking at different ways to do cooling.
They're self-policing. So, I mean, it's all part of the conversation, and the private sector is also included in that. And they have, a few years ago, they had plans for their facilities, whether it's data centers or semiconductors, to use, well, more appropriately, data centers, to use water-cooled technology to keep the space at the temperature they need. And now, they're shifting, they're self-policing. It's not because we made them do it, but because they understand we all have to be a part of the conversation, and they're taking it upon themselves to change their technology, to go to air-cooled. And air-cooled really is not much different than a tilt-up warehouse when it comes to energy or water usage.
And just one, and I'll add this, too. We talked about the water usage for residential. So, we gave that 6,000 average per month for residential. That may be the average for the whole city, but you look at new development in the Eastmark numbers, and they're below 5,000. So, even with new development, new appliances, different way of irrigating, we're already seeing even that change on the residential side, where that number is not pushing up. It's actually, we're seeing it coming down.
I appreciate all of this, and I think part of this discussion reminds me of our plan to meet our climate action goals, which is, here's our aspirational goals. We don't know how we're going to get there. We're going to, it's going to be new technology. We're going to look for innovative ways to get there. I'm less comfortable with that being the plan for, to answer the water question. So, I would love to see a graph that has a pessimistic view of declining CAP allocations, you know, that we're in an increasingly arid environment, and it's going to not get better, probably going to get worse. And then, also, a graph that shows supply, but then also includes, yeah, I think it's a safe assumption that the Gila River water is going to come online. We're going to spend the $180 million to do that. I think there's a good, it is reasonable to say we're going to increase the Bartlett Dam, and so that we do have good answers to some of these things. I'd love to see that on a graph, so that the supply and the demand, I can say to people, 25 years from now, we're not going to have to just call a halt to development, or we're going to, you know, that's the doomsday scenario that we're all planning for today to avoid. So, at some point, if we could work on a graph like that, I would love to have that and share it with the community.
I think that's a good idea, Mayor. We can look at viable scenarios and a range of scenarios, if you will, and then we can put together forecasts and strategies.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
On the range of scenarios, are you familiar with the letter that came from AMO's Executive Director, Warren Tenney?
Are you talking about the, so I know there's, is this the Six Basin state?
Six Basin Letter from February 9th.
Right, correct.
So, in that letter, the director painted an unflattering picture of what that potential could be. And he stated in here that the Central, first of all, the Central Arizona Project has junior priority, right? Junior priority to California, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. So, that there was a possibility of having zero Colorado River water available, and that come because of the California suit. They also, you also suggested that AMO City should expect a 40 to 50% cut to our highest priority Colorado River water, starting in 2024, which is simply next year, and that that is twice as deep as what we had planned under the Tier 3 shortage. And where are we now in tiers? One?
Tier 2, 2A.
Tier 2, 2A. These are significantly deeper cuts than we've heard about in the past. So, should this come to fruition, where are we in plan to provide water in Mesa with cuts at this level?
So, Councilmember Summers, we looked at the worst case that you talked to in that letter. Well, not the worst, worst case. The worst case would be if there's no water flowing in the CAP canal. So, that's Deadpool in Lake Mead. And that's about 100 foot lower than the elevation of Lake Mead right now. Lake Mead is about, oh, what's the elevation?
1047.
Yes, 1047. 950 is Deadpool, so it's about 100 foot lower. The 40 and 50% cut, that's severe. What we did strategically is we put together a month-by-month operational plan for 2024 to look at how we would, how we would get by with that reduced amount of Colorado River water in those two eastern zones, the eastern and southern zone. We fare pretty good with 40 to 50% cut. In fact, we don't need to even look at anything like long-term storage credits. One of the bigger challenges is how we turn down the two treatment plants, because you can't take a treatment plant that's treating 24 MGD and turn it down to 1 MGD, right? There's like a lowest level. For the Signal Butte plant, it's about 6 MGD, and for the Brown Road plant, it's about 20 MGD. So, what we would do, just give you a flavor of what the scenario looks like in the wintertime, because we're trying to conserve that smaller amount of CAP water, we would just not even operate the Signal Butte plant. In the winter, we would use groundwater wells. In the summer, we'd probably run at maximum capacity, and then Brown Road would run at some diminished capacity. So, it's a balancing act. And we wanted to look month by month, because we didn't want to look at just what water do we have to work with? Is that enough to meet demand plus some wells? Because every month is different. January looks so much different than July. So, doing that modeling, things look good. We're not using any long-term storage credits. If cuts get more severe than that, now we are using long-term storage credits.
How much would we have to increase our capacity to pump out the groundwater? You mentioned we're only using about 2/3 of our, of what we can pump out. So, would we have, how much more would we have to pump out? Do we have the capacity in the wells to pump that out currently? And how long do we estimate that that would last, the groundwater, in order to bridge, if we're at Deadpool?
I want to make sure I understand your question. How long would we need long-term storage credits?
No, well, how much groundwater, I'm not even breaking into the credits yet. How much, how long will that groundwater last if we have to increase the capacity, one, to bridge a time during Deadpool? And do we have the capacity in our, in our wells to pump out that amount of water? Because I'm looking at a map here that shows a lot of wells that we still have yet to construct. So, can we pump the water out that we need to supply the eastern and southern zones? And how long will that groundwater last? Do we know?
Well, for the 40 to 50% cut, let's start there. Instead of pumping 8,000 acre foot of groundwater like we have been in recent years, we would, we would pump the full allocation, so 12,000 acre foot. So, we'd get by fine in that scenario. If you're talking deeper cuts than that, our well field is sufficient that we can pump more groundwater to further bridge those cuts. If we get into, if we get into the worst-case scenario, where Lake Mead drops another 100 feet and we're at Deadpool, then we're getting into an area where we're getting into stage 2, 3, probably most likely 4 of our water shortage plan, where everything up until now, we're in stage 1 of our water shortage plan, has really been actions taken by our department and the city of Mesa as a whole in conserving water and just being more efficient in terms of how we operate. But once we get into those really, really deeper cuts that hopefully we don't get there, but if we do, now we're getting into, we're going to need cooperation from the community. And that could come in the form of conservation. It could, it would be a lot of tools that we furnish, Mayor and council, because it's the Mayor and council that will decide and make the call when we go into stage 2, 3, or 4 of the drought management plan. So, what we do is give you a set of tools that range from mandatory conservation measures, anywhere to financial components like surcharges or changes to the tiered structure, ways that influence behavior and cooperation to help us. Because if our supplies are dropping, and they drop so far where it's straining our capacity to meet that gap with wells, we need to bend down the demand curve. And the only way to bend down that demand curve is cooperation, widespread cooperation.
And that's, and so, when he says here that it's twice as deep as we planned under Tier 3 storage, we have a plan for that level of cut?
Yes.
Is that 4?
That's so that 40 to 50%, so I would say 40 to 50% is even 3X of what Tier 3. Tier 3 would be about a 7,000 acre foot cut. We're planning for 20,000 acre foot cut, and how we manage that in 2024, we manage it fine.
With current use, but that's going to really impact our development and our growth potential as well.
That's where, if those cuts are sustained, and they even get worse, that's where we're going to really have to make smart decisions in terms of how we use our water.
All right, thank you. I think we have Ms. Duff and Ms. go forth. Go ahead.
First of all, I apologize. I called you Brian. I don't know, you always look for Brian to me, and Brian's there, so, Chris.
I get Jeff a lot.
All right. I don't know. I even see you in the high hall, you know, say, hi, Brian. I'm like, oh, stop. Okay. But I have quite a few questions about wells that is a concern. But before I get into that, I think we're at a point that we start looking at our economic development and be smart about what we want to happen with our economic development and what those conditions are, of what kind of development that is smart for satisfying our water supplies. I know that Chandler has looked at some things about how much water, employment, land use, all those things. And I would hope that we start looking at that now, instead of at the time that we're in desperate need, and then saying, oh, now we found out that we can't support, we need to adjust where we're going economically. There's a lot of projects coming into the Phoenix metropolitan area overall, that we're all drinking from the same straw, right? And so, I just wanted to put a consideration for that. But getting back to the wells, I know we're drilling a couple of new wells in District 6.
Maybe, would you like him to present that?
Yeah, maybe I should.
Because I think that was kind of the next slide.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions about wells, whether we do it now or the next, maybe we should go through the next slide. Okay.
Yeah, I think I can answer some questions for Councilmember Duff. You have some good questions. This is, what you're looking at here, this image, it's in southeast Mesa. You can see that yellow rectangle, that's the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, so that's at Elliott and Signal Butte Roads. There are a number of different colored dots on the page. So, the blue dots are wells that are already in service. There's a wells that are operational today. There's about eight yellow dots, and all eight of those yellow dots, they are wells that are in some form of development right now. A couple are being drilled, a couple are being designed for full build-out to get to operation. Those eight wells are in our five-year CIP, our current five-year CIP. So, at the end of five years, those will be done. And then, there's three red dots, there's actually four that we're initiating. Those will be done just outside of the five-year CIP. So, to put it in some perspective, we're adding 12 new wells in about a six-year period. So, we have 35 now, so we're adding a full third.
So we have 35 now, so we're adding a full third of new wells. You're talking about a well field that's well over 50 years old, and now we're adding a full third. And we have a full 10- to 12-year plan in total, not just these 12, but probably get up to 20 to 25 new wells. The purposes, and that's because there's so much development and growth happening in this area. Mesa's 85% built-out rate, so that 15% that's left, going to your earlier point, we do need to be smart about what kind of growth that is and just be cognizant of how that relates to water. The one thing I wanted to point out on why we need these wells, because we're actually putting in a lot of wells over a short period. There's three main reasons we need wells. One is for, if we take down a plant for maintenance, which, if we do heavy maintenance and take down a plant for six weeks, we've got to be able to meet customer demand. And typically, it's this time of year that we do that, when demand is lower. We turn on those wells and we meet customer demand. The other time would be during the summer peak. So if we're maxed out at a treatment plant and we get a couple of months of our highest demand, we're going to turn on a few wells to help make sure that we're meeting that peak demand. And then the third would be an emergency. It could be a major transmission main breaks, it could be an outage at a plant that's unexpected, then we need to turn on wells. Or it could even be pumping long-term storage credits. And we could talk a little bit about that more, but we have over half a million long-term storage credits, and we have those for a reason, because if we ever get into any kind of emergency, we need to go and pump those credits, some of those credits.
Yes, thank you for that overview. And on last week's council agenda, we did approve the drilling, the funds to drill the two wells, additional wells, which I think are number 33 and 34 in southeast Mesa. So issue has this awesome amount of information that airs on a curve, and it has a modeling, and you can see where you have opportunities for retention of water, especially when it comes to wells and drawing the water out of the aquifer. But in southeast Mesa, there are no opportunities to recharge, I didn't see any, recharge the groundwater in that area. And so once we use that groundwater in that area, there's no opportunity, I mean, it's gone forever, that aquifer collapses. Is there anything that we are doing that we can take some kind of mitigation? Drilling, taking water from that area in which we can keep the aquifer with water?
Well, our strategies always center around pumping in a way that preserves the aquifer and doesn't do any long-term damage to the aquifer in terms of subsidence or drawing that down. We pump these wells pretty infrequently. So as I went over the list of reasons why we use them, they're very intermittent, so they're only used to back up the plants. So the plants are first and foremost, and we rely on the surface water. That's why we try to just, we try to responsibly approach when we pump, how we pump, always keeping in mind the integrity of the aquifer.
I agree. And we have opportunity, we have a water retention and basins that we, across the city, but I am concerned about the southeast area, because there is no way to replenish or recharge that aquifer. So whatever water we take out of there is forever gone.
Geologically, that wouldn't make sense, right? The water would eventually, is getting recharged naturally, that's how it got there in the first place. So it's, we purposely put water into an underground storage tank, or, but the water got there through, over time, that water got there in an aquifer from rain, and so it's not, it's just the, you know, how much are you taking out, how much is percolating through the process? I don't know you could say, I mean, the water got there somehow, right? And eventually, it'll continue geologically to continue to have that water percolate and fill up that aquifer.
But there are areas that the aquifer become rea-
If you don't manage it, I think that's where we're pointing out, we have to manage that, we have to be careful.
They're depleted, and there are ways where it's recharged, but there are areas where there is, and maybe I misunderstood, and I have to admit that, I did talk to Catherine Sorenson, and she says all good things about Mesa and appreciates and said, you know, we have a great team, and I don't want to challenge you in that way. But I was just, had seen her at an event a couple of days ago and started having these questions. So I'm just coming up from trying to bridge the information that I received and what we have going on.
There's checks and balances in place as well. So the water table at a lot of these wells you're looking at is in the 500 to 600 foot below ground surface. There's backstops in place through ADWR in terms of when a water level gets so low you can't pump anymore, so those wells become off limits. I think it's 1,000 feet. Is that correct, Brian?
Correct.
So there's backstops in place that we reserve or observe, and there's quite a bit of buffer right now. And we always want to keep that buffer. We want to keep some substantial buffer in place. So it always, that works into our strategy in terms of what wells we turn on, when we turn them on. We're always keeping in mind that aquifer, because we do need to preserve that aquifer.
If I might add, Chris, Councilmember Duff, to answer some of your question, the valley as a whole, especially southeast Mesa, we do get a bit of recharge from the frontal range, say, superstitions. You have the Goldenfield Mountains, Usury. You do get some recharge there every year when it rains, like it is today, and there is a nice bit of snow on Usury this morning. But we do have a lot of stormwater retention basins, which is incidental recharge that we do receive out in southeast Mesa. And we monitor the groundwater table, as Chris mentioned, and we have not seen significant declines in that because of our strategies. So there is an ongoing natural recharge going on, but a large portion of our recharge credits that we've banked is in southeast Mesa over the years. So the water's there.
Yes, the water is there. My question is, do we have any plans to, ways to recharge it? Or are we just, I mean, you're saying through rain or whatever, but my understanding, maybe we get some, but is fossilized aquifer underneath has been there for thousands of years, right? So it's not like it's rising because we're not using it and there's rain. It is, it's a-
I don't know.
Static.
There's, yeah, there are actually parts of the aquifer that have been rising. We have wells that we, because we document very closely the depth to water, and they're just, have conversations with our team just in recent months. There are numerous wells where the water table has actually risen over the years, just because we really abstained from pumping. Now, if we do get into an era where these cuts are severe and they're just, they range over a number of years, there are strategies that we can use. There's wells called aquifer storage and recovery wells, where you take potable water and not only do you deliver to customers, but during certain times of the year, you can actually pump that right into the aquifer. If it's treated potable water, you can do that. We haven't planned for anything like that in our CAP, because there just hasn't been a need. But as we closely monitor groundwater levels, and there's a trajectory that maybe points in that direction, we will look at techniques and infrastructure like that.
Yeah, I realize we have recharged, in particular, the southeast, as we have these new wells online, that we take measures to watch what we're doing there and try to mitigate any long-term effect, so that we can hopefully just use our wells on these bridge-type of uses and not get into the point of using it. You know, using it for reserves in case of emergency, in case whatever, the ways we're using them now versus depending on it for our water supply.
Yes, Councilmember Duff, we share your concerns 100%. And in past years, it just wouldn't have been wise to use the capital to design and build infrastructure to try to recharge, because we do have stable groundwater levels. They have been stable. They, like I've pointed out, they've risen in certain areas of the city. But if we do get into a long-term trend where we think things might look different, then we would plan differently, and then that investment in capital to take those measures would be, it would be looked at differently, it would be more important.
Great, great. Thank you.
Gentlemen, how many more slides are in your presentation?
77.
Okay. I'm just wondering if maybe we, may we allow you to finish your presentation? I'm guessing that's going to answer some, maybe some of the questions that we have.
They will, we have a half dozen or so.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we do that and then save our questions for the end?
Mayor and Council, again, I'm Brian Draper, Mesa's Water Resources Advisor. This next slide, I probably don't need to go over it a whole lot, because it was covered during Chris and Beth's presentation on why it's so important for the Central Mesa reused pipeline. But we, Mesa does make anywhere from 95 to 100% use of our reclaimed water, not only in Mesa, but also what goes out to 91st Avenue. Most of that water at 91st Avenue is sent to Palo Verde Nuclear Power Plant for cooling water. It goes to other irrigation districts to offset agriculture. And then there's some recharge components with the wetlands out there. So Mesa does a good job of making good use of our reclaimed water. Again, you've seen this slide before, and I won't belabor it. But again, this pipeline really will help us maximize the use of our reclaimed water from the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant for wet water at our treatment plants. Right now, it currently goes to Grusp, where we bank water for long-term storage credits.
Let me add something to the pipeline, why it's so important, and it goes right to the heart of what we've been talking about. So in that Colorado River bucket of water, in that portfolio, we have about 62,000 acre-feet. And going to the point that I mentioned earlier, how it's always changing and growing, once we finish this pipeline and we connect in the Northwest Reclamation Plant, that will leapfrog our, that bucket of water from 62,000 acre-foot to 72,000 acre-foot. It'll gap up that quickly. And if our organic demand in those two eastern zones is 55,000, and now we've got 72,000, we're just, we keep raising the bar, so that as we do get cut on the Colorado River, we're getting cut from a much higher number, and that puts us in a much better position.
This next slide kind of details as well the water banking that we do, primarily at Grusp. And I do want to reemphasize, Grusp is just one area that Mesa has long-term storage credits, that we can recover through our permitted recovery wells. And every well that we put in at the city of Mesa is permitted as a recovery well to withdraw these long-term storage credits for beneficial use. The water we are sending to Grusp is Class A water, and on average, we're banking about 8,000 acre-feet when Grusp is online. That's not always the case. As Councilmember Freeman expressed, we may have a spill on the river or will this year, and that will take Grusp offline. So over the 20 years that we've been using it, it's been off about 50% of the time. But when it is online, we've been banking recently close to about 8,000 acre-feet of water.
And Brian, that water bank is significant.
Yes.
I mean, I've heard some estimates, it's as big as Suara Lake. I mean, it's a huge underground water bank the city is part of.
Correct.
And to further that point, if you look at that 540,000 acre-foot, that's how much we have stored, that's our long-term storage credits. If we get deeper, say we get deeper than those 40 to 50% CAP cuts that we talked about, because in that scenario, we're not even tapping into long-term storage credits. Say we get a 75% cut, and we're using 10,000 acre-foot a year of long-term storage credits, well, that's 50 years of pumping long-term storage credits. If those cuts were sustained that long, it's impossible to predict that, but just gives you a little bit of size and scope of how important these credits are.
Well, and using your checking account, this is our savings account. And our savings account is generational. We don't want to go there, right? No one likes to start dipping into their savings account. But under that, Mayor, your worst-case scenario, I think, what, the way I want the council to think about our water portfolio, it has all these layers, right? It has all these options. Some of what we don't talk a lot about, because we just, it's like that savings account, that investment that you put out here, almost for your generations. It's almost like you're thinking about it not just for you, but for your future generations, right? That's why it's there. But it's there. So if you ever need it under the worst-case scenario, that we can go there. Now, you don't like to dip into it, because it takes a lot of effort to build it up, but it's multi-generational opportunity in that savings account. But, you know, the day you start dipping into that, you know, the clock kind of starts ticking, but you can buy time with it. That's the other thing. You can buy time until another season comes along. So it is concerning, but at the same time, it's kind of like you know you've got a pretty big savings account sitting out there.
Okay, moving on. Just to remind you, we are in a Stage One water watch of our water shortage management plan. The main reason we went into that last May was to really initiate a messaging campaign, not that we didn't do it before, we've always been messaging about conservation and using water wisely, but this really ramped it up. It gave us an opportunity to pivot our message, and then there were no mandatory water use reductions to the community, but we have been messaging and encouraging our customers to do so. I would say that the goal of this plan was a 5% reduction of demand that focused on city facilities. And to date, from what we're hearing, we've exceeded that 5% goal.
I think we're pushing, at Parks alone, I want to say we were close to 15%.
Yep. And so if you need to see the plan, I think we've kind of pointed it out to several of you, but the link is down at the bottom of the slide. But I can't overemphasize the fact that we have been actively messaging, we've been out there, we've been presenting. The message is out there. My coworker, Kathy McDonald, has been doing a wonderful job continually getting messaging out there on social media, on our city website. And so if you're concerned or have any questions regarding that, we'd be more than happy to have her come up and kind of detail some of the things she's been actively working on. But I just, I want to emphasize that, because it's easy not to see it all the time and think that we're not doing a good enough job messaging, but we are.
And Brian, recently, and Kathy, maybe you just nodded your head, but with the new incentives on turf replacement, we've seen a pretty good uptick in that effort. So again, that outdoor use elimination, we're trying to create those motivations, and they've seemed to have resonated fairly well. Is that fair?
So we're trying to find ways to encourage people to find better ways to use their water, or not use their water, I guess, in this case.
Right, and that leads into the next slide. You'll see here some of the examples of demand management that we've been implementing. Again, we've been expanding our customer outreach, as Mr. Brady had detailed, increasing the monetary incentives for turf removal and irrigation efficiency. And a big thing that helps kind of change the way water is being used is we have a four-tiered rate structure with the drought commodity charge now, that was effective in January. In the future, that may be something we look at to be more equitable, you know, with rates, you know, is looking at that drought commodity charge, but that'll be something coming up later in this year.
This is something we'll skip through. There's a really compelling story, but it really just speaks to technology and innovation that we're using to inspect our large transmission mains to look for leaks. And this is, the pipe didn't look like this to start with, but the technology detected an anomaly behind the mortar, so the contractor, we de-watered, contractor chipped away the mortar, found this rust, this is actually a Hibbert transmission main, it's a large transmission main just near the light rail. And the only thing standing between catastrophic damage around that, maybe even to the light rail, was a corroded piece of steel thinner than a credit card. So technology found that, and this is something we've been doing for several years, and we continue to expand upon that program. This is our last slide.
Last slide. Again, we just want to emphasize that we are very focused on water quality and making sure that the water we're delivering to our customers is safe to drink and meets all federal standards. We are required to send out a consumer confidence report every year, and as reflected here on the slide, you can see the last one in 2021 won several awards that, for this, and we're very proud of the efforts that Kathy McDonald and also our PIO Weston-Brown has done to make this happen.
I just want to say in closing, that this conversation just has to continue. It's a conversation, the kind of talking we're doing here today, it's outreach we're doing with- with other cities under the umbrella of AMWA. It's those relationships. It's relationships with other states. It's our community, our customers. But we have to keep talking about it because, as I mentioned earlier, going forward, we're going to need to really depend on community involvement and cooperation. And just, everybody's just going to need to learn and understand more about these challenges.
Thank you. I think, and we do have additional questions, and I'm not going to ignore that. But is this also part of our general plan update? Are we going to, because this kind of reminds me of the bike pit conversation we had earlier. We could have spent another hour on that. We could spend another hour on this. The question is, when are we going to do that?
So, well, yeah. So first of all, talk about your Water Master Plan that's going on right now.
We're updating our integrated water, so our water and wastewater master plan. So it's our whole system, including reclaimed water. We'll have, we'll basically be at a point where we have a draft report later this year. And then the full sealed by the engineer report will be done in the spring of next year. But we'll basically have a pretty advanced draft later this fall.
But that's being integrated in with the, it'll be almost like a chapter or part of the general plan, but it'll be informative to the general plan.
Exactly.
I look forward to reading that, and I hope it includes the graph I was asking. Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Freeman.
Yeah. You know, this is a fluid conversation today. I just had to put that out there. But I want to thank Chris and Kathy and Brian and your team for this presentation, because this is extremely important. And I want to just reassure everybody that lives in Mesa, we have a great water portfolio. You know, it's like fighting a fire back in the day. He may do that once in a while, but I do not. But we sectorize all of our fires, and we have all the different sectors. So we can call all the layering and the water portfolios to augment water in our community. It's extremely important. You know, as you talked about the recharge, I think there's a recharge at Queen Creek and Higley that the town of Gilbert does. I remember that being built along the Queen Creek flood control space because our farm out there, they put it in over there. There's a small one there. But as I've been attending the AMWA meetings, you know, we have to collaborate with all the other municipalities that we have to say the same messaging. And that's what we have to say, is that we are prepared for drought. You know, the SRP Water Reservoir System is great. There's no problems on that side. You know, obviously the verting the salt, there's adequate water supplies. There's going to be spill this year. We're pretty much sure on that. You know, and when you brought up the long-term storage credits and our groundwater banking, and I want to know how much interest that earns, because we don't want to touch that savings account. But there is interest earned. That water is, when it's used, it is replenished. And the spills that we have, that water goes along the Salt River, and it goes in the groundwater basins. There's actually geological formations in the Salt River Basin that pushes the water up in plumes and pushes the water further around in all the municipalities downstream. You know, we didn't even talk about shared well use agreements with SRP, because that's available for pushing water out in our community, because SRP can build a well, or we can build a well. We can have a shared well use agreement and augment additional waters that, you know, separate of our own well system. These agreements will, you know, be in place for many years. In fact, I was, last December, when I, at the CRUA conference, I'll use Mr. Dave Roberts as the name, I asked him, how is Mesa's water supply? And he says Mesa has the best water supply in the whole valley, because over decades and generations, we have saved and conserved water, and we have it banked in a savings account. So I know we want to use our surface water, surface water to push that out in our community, but we have all the backups in place to be reassured in our community that we have great and a great, a lot of water available. And some of these projects, as we know, the raising of Bartlett, drilling wells, a lot of these, and the skip, or the skiff, all that is eight to 10 years away on some of the major projects. Wells are two years out. You know, bringing those all together, I'm hoping with the wet winter that we have, that it will delay any, or postpone any future cuts. But there again, if there are any, we're prepared for the worst. So, and it's not worse. There's no worse yet. So I just wanted to reassure everybody. But I'm extremely grateful for our water group and what you do. And thank you, Mr. Brady and others, for putting this on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Summers?
I'd like to thank you for the presentation, for the work that's been going on for a long time as well. Like Mr. Freeman said, this conversation, I think, even though there's a lot of questions, has flowed very well.
Nothing.
Yeah. Couldn't let him beat me. But... You know, I still have concerns, and I think we need to be bluntly honest with our constituency about what our water situation is. We might have a lot of water in credits. We might have a lot of water stored in the bank. But there are rules to how much water we can draw. The bank will only allow us to take out so much cash at any given time. I can only take $10,000 to cross seas if I want to. So there are some limitations to this that are going to impact, no pun intended, the flow of water through our community. And we need to be, we need to have that honest conversation. I think one thing this council has done is, and will continue to do, is to look at how we incentivize our businesses and the folks who live here to invest in technologies and techniques that reduce our water supply. I mean, at a residential level, you mentioned the turf removal. I used that myself many years ago. I don't have grass at my house. We use artificial turf. But there are a lot of other technologies that would help us capture rainwater at our houses and our businesses, for example, to use in landscaping. That takes up the 70% of the water that we use right now. We need to explore those and see about expanding the incentives for those opportunities that are proven. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Any other comments on this?
I'll try and, just going back to the wells, and then I'll leave it alone. I know I'm drilling it. But when we have surrounding communities, Queen Creek, Gilbert, do we coordinate with them when we are drawing for the aquifer? Maybe they're doing the same thing? Do we, is there, or is that fit under the management plan? I was trying to think of it.
Sure. Councilmember Duff, I have some thoughts, but Brian, do you want to weigh in at all?
Councilmember Duff, we don't necessarily coordinate with our surrounding communities when we're all pumping groundwater. But per our designation, we're all limited on how much we can draw. And that's based on a 100-year model that was done by the Arizona Department of Water Resources to ensure that we have a 100-year supply, that it's physically there, it's legally there, and we have the financial capability to pull it out of the ground. So I would say that as long as we're adhering to our designations, everything should be fine. But again, as Councilmember Summers pointed out, if we hit Deadpool, there will be communities that have less renewable supplies that will be going strictly to groundwater. And there is a potential impact to the East Valley when they do that.
And so, Brian, to the point, and Chris, you kind of said this, you can't take what we're telling you is what Mesa has for water and the backup is not the same in other communities. I mean, we're, just the access to the Salt River, the on-project water is, I don't know, I mean, other going, when you have to go west to those communities to have that opportunity. But if you're a community that's east and south of us, you probably don't have access to that. Is that fair? So their whole portfolio and their dependency on Colorado may be very different, maybe extremely different than where it's ours. So they, to your concern, but it's, they may be pushed faster to that groundwater than others who have other sources. So, yeah.
Isn't there a big master plan development to the east of District Six, that Apache, under Apache Junction?
Oh, Super.
Superstition Vista.
Superstition Vista, yeah.
Is that still a plan? I mean, because that's desert, and we're not, it's not taking away agricultural land and saying, okay, we're using less water because instead of agriculture is homes. It's desert, and so that is an additional impact on water supplies. And I know that's not our jurisdiction. I'm just wondering if it was an active plan. Or do you know?
From what we've heard, Councilmember Duff, Apache Junction, the City of Apache Junction's Water District will be supplying the water for the first couple phases. They do have ample CAP supplies to do that at this point in time. They also recharge a lot of water at the Superstition Mountain Facilities Community District. And they recharge most of the wastewater that they obtain from Apache Junction and will be receiving from this community. So they do have a few wells that they have going in, but as they pump, they'll also be recharging. And so I don't think there would be immediate impact on the aquifer. But again, as Colorado River supplies get cut, if we went to Deadpool, they would be all groundwater.
Yeah. And I think a lot of the Colorado plan was built upon water being available in a static way. And now we're looking at it and cuts every year forever out. And so anyway, I'm glad that we'll be redoing our Assured Water Plan shortly so that we can all kind of adjust to the new reality. And I just want to put a shout out to everybody out there. My own big push to residents is what you can do to help conserve water is get your weather-smart drip systems. They're just like your drip system we have now, except it keeps track of the weather, and it knows when it rains, and it'll shut itself off. You don't have to remember to go out there and turn it off because we got rain. And that saves a tremendous amount of water, since 70% of our water is into our landscaping as residents. So I highly encourage that. I cringe every time I walk by someone's yard and it's raining outside and their sprinklers are going. And I'm like, no. So that's one thing. And maybe at some point, we could find some kind of rebate or incentive program that we could offer in our sustainability programs. I don't know. But, and I know we have it talking in another presentation about our stormwater and how we can collect that, and even how, and the retention green water, I mean, green infrastructure and collect that. Better use it for our landscaping and not letting it just run down the street where we don't have any capture on it. So, thank you.
We're always exploring opportunities. And then we always want to reinforce the idea that you should know how much water you're using at your house. So, I mean, you can ask me, and I could tell you, I use 7,000 gallons of water at our house. In the summer, maybe it goes up to nine. So you should, you got to know what your numbers are as a baseline, because if you're going to cut, or if you really want to participate and try to make cuts at your own house or your own business, you want to know where you're starting from. So look at your water bill, and you want to understand how much water you're using to begin with. And then to continue your shout-out theme, I just want to, I want to reassure everybody, because I'm reassured, we have such an outstanding staff in our Water Resources Department. I mean, they impress me tremendously every day, just how their expertise and their professionalism and what they do, everything from the folks working on addressing leaks to messaging, water quality, I mean, you can go, water treatment, go down the whole line, just tremendous staff. I'm impressed every day by our team.
Whenever I'm out in the community, various professionals of other cities, municipalities, water, and I mentioned I'm from Mesa, and we're talking about water, just so many compliments about, you have a great staff, a great program. You need to be proud of the work that you're doing in Mesa around water. So thank you for all that you do, to you and all your staff.
Thank you. Ms. Spillsbury?
This discussion's obviously already gone on way too long, but I wanted to thank you because this is important. And I'm all about the communication to our residents and how to get this information to them and help them understand. And so I love, I just wanted to make a big point, the mesasaz.gov/water website. I've spent a little bit of time on it, and I love it. It's really, really user-friendly. Kathy's back there. Woohoo! It's like, it's super cute. There's fonts and logos, and it's just, it's, I know, everyone's laughing at me, but this is important to people like me. So it's just very, very user-friendly and very informative and very easy to navigate. And there's so much good information on here. And so I would just recommend anyone that wants to learn more about this kind of complicated situation. I mean, there's things that, bigger picture and how it affects your own household. And so I would just encourage people to go to that website. And there is so much information on there that will help you. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Kathy is doing a tremendous job with that. And it's continually, she's evolving this every day. Every day she's building this and gathering information and just really growing the knowledge that's demonstrated here.
It'd be cool if it was ugly, but it's even better since it's so cute. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll, I'm sure we'll continue this conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
We're hiring in water. We need water people.
That's right. We're hiring in water. Next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Spillsbury?
Just got to give a big shout out to Women History Month. We're going to be milking this for all it's worth this month, doing everything we can to celebrate the amazing women in our city and in leadership and in our history. So, and then Councilmember Duff and I got to do something really fun yesterday. We got to go, Alicia couldn't make it, but we got to go throw out the first pitch at the Cubs game. Neither of us made a fool of ourselves, which was really exciting. And it was such a fun experience. So, and then I just want to give a shout out that on Saturday, finally, is our Community Literacy Initiative Summit. It'll be at the Dobson Ranch Library from 10 to 2. This is in partnership with Mesa Public Schools, United Way, so many other organizations that are coming together for our big new initiative, which is Read on Mesa. And I'm really excited about that. And so Vice Mayor Heredia and the mayor and I will all be reading, and kids can come and listen to us read, and then do a craft that goes with the book. And there's just going to be a lot of activities out there, so I encourage everyone to attend that.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. Ms. Duff?
Yes. I'll mention a few things. I wanted to mention that some of us were, Councilmember Gophers, the mayor, Julie and I were at the Citizen of the Year event on Monday evening to recognize James Christensen of Gateway Bank. He was Citizen of the Year, Man of the Year. And then Cheryl Loughlin was the Woman of the Year, and for her lifetime of volunteering. So I just wanted to say congratulations to both of them. We really appreciate them in our community. As I kind of mentioned in our water presentation, I did attend the ASU Morrison's Institute Impact Showcase. Mesa PD was there. We were featuring our Real-Time Crime Center, the survey that ASU did, the community survey we did on policing, ASU did with our city, and the Kyle Center for Water Policy was there. And there were some things about affordable housing as well. So that was good. Coming up this weekend, there are a couple of things happening in District Four and downtown, starting tomorrow. There's the Second Annual South Pacific Island Festival, starting at noon, and it goes through Saturday. And then on Saturday, there's the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Multicultural Fair at Porter Elementary from 10 to 3. So that's all I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia?
Really quick. Yesterday, the applications for Mesa Promise Program opened, so that will go through the next several months. So anybody interested in Mesa, who is in a high school, can apply for, there's a couple requirements. So they can go up to our website to get that information, or follow our social media pages. We'll be announcing more drives for FASFA and other work to ensure that folks that are in need of financial assistance, they have an option to go to Mesa Community College and get assistance from our Mesa Promise Program. So.
Great. Thank you. Amen. Anything else, council? You'd like to share with us? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. So we will be meeting Monday, March 6. We will have an early start timed to 5:00. We'll bring back the council priorities that we were talking about last, I guess, no, it was Monday. Sorry. I think it's a long time ago. Monday. So we'll bring you back again Monday, so we'll do a 5:00 start, just a few minutes earlier than the 5:15. So we'll see you then.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our agenda. Is there a motion adjourned? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.